Okay, well, I want to just say good morning to everyone. It's 10:36. I know there may be a few more people logging in. But good morning and welcome to our town hall. You know, spring equinox was just last week and Passover for those who celebrated is tomorrow. It's Palm Sunday this weekend and obviously close to Easter Sunday. So it really is a time of renewal and reflection and rebirth. And I think we all feel a need for that. Certainly, I think the spring always is a harbinger of that. I grew up in the Northeast, and so after long cold winters, spring was always really just so welcome. I know here we don't have necessarily the same significant change in season from winter into spring, but I think certainly this past year or so, I think we certainly feel like we'd like to move on from the season we're in. You know, COVID-19, something we had never thought of before. It's been 451 days since the first global case. For the U.S., it's been 430 days. Arizona had their first case 382 days ago. And here at Hila River Healthcare, we identified our first case on March 16th, 2020, 375 days ago. It's just unfathomable when you think about being in this type of a crisis-like posture for that long. I know that we have many on the call that have had significant training in incident management. And I'm sure they would tell you that it's exceptionally rare that a group has to remain in this type of posture during any type of previous crisis. So I first just want to thank all of you. The toll that this has taken on you as people, on your families, it's tremendous. And the fact that you have delivered such exemplary care and in such a compassionate manner should not go without being recognized immediately at the start of this town hall. You know, I think we all would like to be past COVID-19. I think we're all certainly done with it. The problem is, is that it's not done with us. Just in the last two weeks, the U.S. has seen a 5.6% increase in new cases. In fact, last week, the average daily new cases for the previous seven days was roughly 55,000 cases a day. Right now, yesterday, we had 67,500. And we're seeing a series of states around the country, especially again in the Northeast in the spring, that are seeing a surge of cases. Michigan is certainly most well-known for those of you following it in the news. And even more concerning is the percentage of new cases that are due to a new variant that we've been concerned about, the U.K. variant, a version of the virus that originated in the U.K., which at this point now, at the end of March and going into early April in the United States, is projected to ultimately be the next dominant version of the virus. And that's a concern because all research shows that it's at least 50% more likely to be contagious than the original virus we've been fighting for nearly 375 days here. But it also unfortunately can create a more severe version of the illness. In fact, a recent study out of the U.K. showed that for those that have contracted the U.K. variant, they had a 64% increase in fatality over 28 days during hospitalization. And unfortunately, that is now the dominant variant in the country. And we're seeing again an increase in cases, especially in the Northeast. In fact, right now, when you take a look at the general trends in the country, nearly 30 states have seen an increase in cases relative to a week or two weeks ago. So that significant decline that we've been experiencing since late January, early February, which has been so welcome, it's really plateaued throughout the country. And now again, an increase in some areas and an increase overall in the country. That includes as well hospitalizations. The decline in hospitalizations has recently plateaued. And there's some signs that it's starting to increase again because of some of the areas of the country. However, just like last spring, the cases here in Arizona continue to trend down. We're very fortunate that at this point, the cases are lowering. And as is hospital utilization for COVID-19, although hospital occupancy is still fairly high, close to 90%, but not the same percentage of COVID patients. That said, one of the more challenging concerns now here in Arizona are those new variants. On a daily basis, we update leadership in the community and the Board of Directors, a lot of you that are in operations. And one of those updates is on viral sequencing in the state of Arizona. And right now, Arizona has sequenced roughly 1.4% of the positive samples that are obtained when people get that nasal swab test. And tracking it since December has shown that we're looking at approaching 2.5% of those have been the U.K. variant. Nearly 20% have been a version called the California variant, which also unfortunately shows that it's more infectious and can cause a more severe version of the illness. We have had the concerning Brazilian variant. We now have four cases in the state of Arizona. And in fact, even our colleague, Dr. Michael Dake, who's the Senior Vice President for Health Sciences at the University of Arizona and Dean of the Medical School, has talked about the fact that they have identified the U.K. variant now on their campus, conducted by their labs. They're very concerned at the U of A. He again talks about the seriousness of this variant. Typically, it's been projected that it can double in its presence every 9.8 days. That seems to be the slow gradual trend we've been seeing here in Arizona. It's been more rapid in other areas of the country. But it's because of the concern that the U of A actually has said that it's imperative, using Dr. Dake's words, imperative to continue to wear your face covering, maintain physical distancing, avoid large gatherings, that the university's face covering policy will not change. Face coverings are required in all university buildings, including classrooms, libraries, campus recreational facilities, instructional settings. And that it's even required on a U of A property to maintain mask wearing when outside. He goes quite a bit into vaccinations, which I will as well, as important in this fight. You know, when we talk about the current trends right now, I think it's important to perhaps look back a little bit and to see where we're coming from. As of this morning, Hila River Healthcare has completed nearly 95,000 PCR tests. When you combine that with the testing efforts of the community, that also does their employees and their business entities, we have actually completed over 205,000 tests together. That is greater than 5% of all of the testing done in the state of Arizona. I bring it up because very early on in this pandemic, we identified a few things. We watched what was happening in the Northeast. We heard what was happening in hospital systems, that they didn't have enough PPE, that they're overcome by a surge, that their own staff were getting ill. We, of course, took very early and aggressive actions, which many of you recall back last spring. We moved many people as we could to telecommute. We certainly set up an entire different campus footprint in how we had ingress and egress and how people could move throughout our buildings. We had screening stations. We very early on were aggressive about getting appropriate PPE for our staff. We embraced testing. We knew that unfortunately, this virus does spread when someone is not symptomatic. And we knew that we had to be able to be aggressive with our testing to be able to identify and appropriately quarantine for safety for people themselves so that they're not unwittingly spreading it to others, even their family, but also to coworkers and to patients. And throughout that time, we adopted a lot of policies that were adaptive to the conditions at hand. Everything from our travel policy to how we did labor pool, so many things. And here we are now in the phase of vaccinations. At a time early on, when vaccinations perhaps were very difficult to obtain, we were very successful and ensured that as we moved forward from day one, that our employees were a part of that. First, our frontline and essential, and then all of our employees. At the same time, of course, listening to community leadership, we focused on the most vulnerable, our elders, those in our long-term care facility, our caring house, our dialysis patients, those in the community that had serious pre-existing conditions, those over 55, and then eventually evolving to all over 18. And even yesterday, we had a change in our eligibility to where now we will start with those 16 and above who will receive the Pfizer vaccine. And you'll hear quite a bit about this as we start our plans and operations for Monday. In our vaccine effort, roughly 68% of our employees have been vaccinated, 85% of our caring house residents, on average, over 70% of our dialysis patients. And when you take a look at national efforts right now in this fight, certainly nationally, we're seeing significant efforts. Across the country, 134 million vaccines have been administered. That's roughly a third of our population. And roughly 18%, little less than 1 in 5, have been fully vaccinated, meaning that they've either received both doses of Pfizer or Moderna or a single dose of the Janssen or Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. More importantly, that for those over the age of 65, 71% of Americans that are over the age of 65 have received at least one vaccine. And nearly 45% have been fully vaccinated. In the state of Arizona, over 3 million vaccines have now been administered. It's roughly 27% of the population. About 16.5% of people have been fully vaccinated. Those are not significant numbers yet. We are glad to see that when they prioritize those that were older. In fact, in the state of Arizona, for those over 65, 71% have been vaccinated. And I'm starting out with the national and with the statewide, but I will certainly give details about us here as well and the community and our patients. But I'm focusing on that first because whenever we look at trends and how we have to adopt our operations, we try to have as significant a perspective as possible. I don't think anyone thought last spring that what was happening in the Northeast would necessarily result in a summer surge in Arizona, but it certainly did. Some of it had to do with changing mitigation and protection guidelines, letting them expire. And then we saw what happened after Memorial Day through the July holiday. It was significant. We were the epicenter in the country. We, as many of you recall, quickly adapted to that as well and did a tremendous job with that first surge, maintaining protection of our staff, our patients, the ability to provide outstanding care. As we entered into the autumn months, again, without vaccines, we continued on maintaining safety. And ultimately, as all of you know, we had our winter surge, which was profound. Most of that occurred because of small family gatherings, the rise in quick transmission in indoor environments. And we were hit very hard. We were tracking this, and I have to tell you that whether it was the community or whether it was here at healthcare, the percentage of individuals who tested positive during that winter surge was significant, outpaced any other part or phase of this pandemic for us. In fact, there were times when we had over 200 of our employees on quarantine on any day. That was more than 20% of those that are working on campus. It was during that time that we had the highest number of patients in our emergency room, in our inpatient settings, as well as starting to roll out a vaccine program. While we still maintained phonic disease management, utilizing telehealth and reaching levels of patient care that were equal to pre-COVID when combining our hybrid method of seeing patients. Significant testing of the community and of our employees. And throughout it all, we've had an exceptionally safe caring house. In fact, there were many CMS surveys in the last year. We were lauded for our safety measures, that it was exemplary and a model. And I want to thank Ron Preston and his team and all those that work at the caring house for all that they've done. But we had to do it with fewer of us available because the virus really hit us hard. As we've come out of it, we've been focused, of course, on vaccines. And for those of you who certainly are perhaps not keeping up with this daily, you may wish to know that at the start of today, Hila River Healthcare, including the caring house, has administered 15,739 vaccines against COVID-19. That includes Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And that's just a tremendous number. And if you couple that to the number of influenza vaccines we've also had to give this season, this team has provided nearly 27,000 vaccines in the middle of everything else that we're doing. A tremendous accomplishment, and every one of those vaccines can save a life. And when you talk about our current inventory, I think all of you know, early on, it was challenging to get vaccines. And we were able to navigate that very successfully by creating a robust program. And we started months in advance preparing for it. And this team has had to adapt to so many different contingencies to continue to get vaccines out to people. And I can tell you that when it comes to our efforts to date, when we talk about the community, there are 21,038 GRIC members in our electronic health record. That's roughly 93% of all enrolled GRIC members. There are 22,621 in the enrollment roster. Out of that 21,038, we have vaccinated just under 3,950 to start the day. That would be a total of roughly 19%. But when it comes to those that are actually eligible, those over 18, up to when this data was collected, it's nearly 30%. And when it comes to community elders, to GRIC elders, we have vaccinated 54% of the GRIC elders. Those are still not where we need to be, where we want to be. And so our team continues to work across all of our enterprises, and many of you, of course, on this call are part of it, to continue all of the necessary components of a vaccine campaign. Messaging and education, logistics and operation. So many of us out there on the Saturdays at those events, I can't thank all of you enough for doing that. What's going on in the district centers? What's going on at the D3 and D6 Boys and Girls Club? What happens here at V L J with Employee Health? What happens in our primary care department? On top of everything else that we're doing, we have focused on vaccines, and it's so important. And the reason I highlight that is that I know many of you are aware that yesterday Governor Ducey gave Executive Order 2021-06. Its title is "Business Guidelines Transition from Requirements to Recommendations." Governor Ducey's executive order focuses on predominantly business enterprises and the opportunity to move away from requirements to simply recommendations when it comes to how many individuals can be within a particular business setting, the requirement from the state level at least in terms of masking or other aspects. But what it does retain, most importantly, is that businesses, whether for-profit or nonprofit, institutions, professions, or entities that operate in the state, that they maintain the right to institute and enforce policies to mitigate against COVID-19 spread, including the use of face coverings, physical distancing, and retain the right to refuse service to those who do not comply with the policies. Governor Ducey goes on to talk about counties, cities, or towns not being able to necessarily enact their own independent policies separate from the statewide executive order. What's not spelled out in that executive order, first and foremost, is that it does not refer to tribal nations. Tribal nations are sovereign entities that can certainly make their own determinations and do. In addition, across the board, when you speak to other healthcare leaders representing their organizations, or as you just heard from Dr. Dake, who represents the University of Arizona Health Sciences, we certainly recognize the importance of our health institutions and maintaining our readiness and the important role we play in society. On our IMT call, our Incident Management Team call this morning, our Director of Employee Health, Bob Kiesacker, I know he's been working with our Safety Officer and Infection Prevention and wanted to know how we were going to respond, and that's certainly part of today's conversation. We are going to maintain all of our safe guidelines. At this moment, we are anticipating, potentially just as last summer, that when the state of Arizona made some choices to be less restrictive, there was a significant surge. And so although the cases are very low, and I can understand that Governor Ducey has a particular constituency and an agenda, ours is different here. We're healthcare. I want to recognize the fact that what we do is not independent from Governor, Lieutenant Governor of the Hila River Indian Community, the council members, the Health and Social Standing Committee, which oversees us, and our Board of Directors, which is directly appointed by them and has responsibility to the community leadership for oversight and guidance. We will maintain our safe guidelines. Governor Lewis's executive orders are still in effect. They are through April 12th, and he's in further discussions right now as to potential changes. But we're also healthcare. And even regardless of perhaps some relaxation that may occur within the community, the expectation for us is to maintain safety and readiness. We are a unique situation where people need to be here if they're ill. They will come to see us when they are ill. And as we saw over the Christmas months, it was a very difficult task for the employees that were on campus with so many individuals that were out and on quarantine. So with that, we will, of course, maintain mask wearing off and on campus, just as there is a community mandate right now. We will continue the use of our N95s universally. At this point, because again, the fairly low vaccination rate in the state of Arizona, the concern for variants, the improving vaccination rate amongst us, but not yet reaching that 90% threshold that I think is an important standard for us as healthcare. And the need, of course, to want to balance between your lives here and your lives outside, that one of the most important protections, of course, is the use of the N95 mask and double masking that provides significant protection against unwarranted unfortunate transmission. We'll continue with screening. We'll continue with our testing. In fact, one of the things that we have been tracking that is important is the effectiveness of our vaccines to date. And one of the ways to track that is to take a look at those post-vaccination that may subsequently test positive for COVID-19. Some of you may recall that when Pfizer and Moderna came out, they didn't necessarily specifically study this. Moderna had a small effort in this in their large trial. Pfizer was more anecdotal. But what they saw essentially was that because their two-dose protocols, that the majority of protection provided by a single dose was not significant. Anywhere from about 52% within the first number of days, perhaps up to a week, and roughly 14 days after the first dose, perhaps approaching 90, 91%. However, certainly 14 days after the second dose is where we saw their efficacy, where they reached 94, 95%. Here at Hila River Healthcare, taking a look at the time when this data was analyzed, there were 8,721 individuals vaccinated. 8,676 have not tested positive for COVID-19 since vaccination, 99.5%. We actually broke it down further to those that perhaps between the first and second dose. And in fact, we did see 38 cases between the first and second dose that people did test positive. We've seen seven cases after an individual's second dose. Fact is, is that the vaccines are not 100%. But this is an incredible high level of efficacy when you start talking about being inclusive, 99.5%. Certainly, that's because also of, we believe, the fact that all of you have maintained excellent safe practices here on campus, and we certainly hope and want to assume when you are off campus. So if you can move the slide forward one for us, Deanna.
Thank you so much. What I wanted to do today during this town hall was to kind of give you that COVID-19 update, tell you a little bit about the current state of our efforts, and then how that impacts some other issues today to give you an update. You know, I think one of the things that we recognize is that this takes a great toll on all of us to maintain this. Well, it certainly can take a toll on an organization. I think all of you know that we are very proud of our organization and our board and the community for the resources provided us to allow us to maintain a safe workplace for everyone, including our patients. You know, early on, I talked about all of the steps that we took. But one of the other steps was we recognized very early on that there was an awful lot that wasn't known. There were still a lot of questions about the virus. We saw how quickly it was running through healthcare systems. And one of the decisions certainly by the board just over a year ago was to provide for those that are on campus, hero pay, for those that are frontline and essential on campus, knowing at that time that people were unfortunately going to be at heightened risk, but willing to come forward. And in the ensuing year, of course, we have been able to maintain a very safe work environment through a lot of policy and effort. First and foremost, of course, as I said, our deep commitment to having the appropriate PPE, something that so many hospitals PPE, something that so many hospital systems didn't have. That was ground zero for us. Secondly, to make sure that we were screening and that we were testing, a really robust testing program, and I don't want it to get lost in all these comments today. Gila River Indian Community, this community and this healthcare organization combined, greater than 5% of all of the diagnostic tests performed in the entire state of Arizona. That's how committed we were. That certainly took enormous effort. It takes a lot of cost. We were very focused as well on a host of other ways to show our appreciation, from scrub programs to how we focused on telecommuting. Certainly, I think everyone's aware of the infrastructure changes in creating negative pressure areas and using alluvia filters, enormous expenses. Hero Pay has cost the organization nearly $7 million. And I don't think any of us assumed back then, when this first started, that we would still be in this circumstance right now, that we would be approaching our second year of confronting COVID-19. We're very proud that we did not have to furlough. We're very proud that we did not have to let people go. And we've been able as well to provide that incentive pay. But as many of you have probably heard, we are phasing it out at the end of March. There are many demands upon the organization to maintain our readiness, a lot of financial demands for operations. And so I think we want to ensure that all of you know that although Hero Pay is phasing out, it doesn't mean, of course, that people are not appreciated. It was really about demonstrating what people needed to do during a period of significant heightened risk. We have done everything we can to lower that risk, and we certainly, I believe, have done everything we can to show a deep appreciation to all of us as employees for a safe work environment and maintaining that for all of you, even when you go home to your families. But Hero Pay certainly is one of those things that are phasing out. It is coupled, however, to what you see as the last bullet point, which is about compensation, and I will address that as well as HR. One thing that we are going to extend, which was to phase out at the end of this month, is coronavirus emergency leave. You know, at this time, there is still an emergency declaration. We are still in a posture of changing our campus at this point, where we're still in a somewhat COVID-based posture. We screen, we test, we use PPE, we do have travel policies to ensure a safe work environment. We are still in a situation where people need to be vaccinated and may have a day or so, perhaps two, of some mild sensitivities to moderate sensitivities a day or two after. We certainly want to ensure that emergency leave is there as we continue in this current posture. So again, although perhaps Hero Pay is phasing out, emergency leave is still intact. And again, I want to thank the leadership and the Board of Directors for maintaining that for employees. You know, we hear what's happening at the state level and the idea of returning fully back to a time when people do not have to focus on COVID-19 and can go back to their everyday lives. I think we all probably to some degree, despite wishing, truly wishing that we were there, probably recognize, of course, that we're not. And as I've said numerous times, our goal as healthcare is to maintain our readiness, given the fact that we do believe not only that there will be future COVID cases, but those that have had COVID are going to need additional care, that there are so many that need us for chronic daily conditions that despite our best efforts with telehealth and some availability of emergent and urgent services, it's just not enough. Right now, there is an incredible need for us to continue to provide even more so the care that we give on a daily basis. So many things that are still ongoing across our enterprise that we have to maintain our workforce. And yet we still want to balance that, recognizing that along with safety, this has been a significant impact to all of you. So we believe that we've put together some reasonable changes to the travel policy. You will receive a memo later today regarding this, but I wanted to first talk to all of you. We made our first travel policy actually back on June 23rd, 2020. It was ultimately extended through the end of September, and then again revised December 14, especially when we saw what was happening quickly during the holiday season. So here it is, March 26th. An effective April 1st, we've made some changes. First, that we absolutely are going to consistently advocate that for all of you, please wear a mask off-campus and when in public. Those are still the recommendations from the CDC. They are still the recommendations, as you saw, from all of the various health experts. But knowing that, we are going to allow for employees to go to hair and nail salons. Again, knowing that they need themselves, no matter what that business guideline is, that you will wear your mask, that people can, besides grocery shopping, do retail shopping. Again, we ask that you maintain mask-wearing when in that public setting. And lastly, that we are going to allow attendance at outdoor events, but only those that do not have established seating. What I mean by that is perhaps some of you wish to attend one of your child's sporting events and you're sitting on the sidelines and you are standing there. Perhaps you brought your own seat and you're distancing from others. But not so much being in the stands or places where people are packed in closely together. We would want you to be able to ensure that you wear your mask, that you distance appropriately, but an outdoor event as such. To be honest, what drove this was things such as funeral services and the need to be by the graveside. And we know that for some, that loss has happened this past year, and there will be future losses. And the ability to be able to attend an outdoor event, maintaining a mask. It is one of the reasons why you will see us continue with the N95 policy, because of that heightened protection. It is why you will see us continue with screening and testing, because again, we want to balance this need for our employees to have some mild phased-in return to normalcy, but in a way that really does take the gravity of the positions we hold and the importance that the organization holds on safety at the workplace. There are some activities that will require prior approval, again, require wearing a mask, and will require quarantine if this behavior, again, is approved. One is an indoor gathering where an employee cannot verify that everyone is vaccinated, but it is a significant life event. Again, what's driving this? Our funeral services. People who wish to attend the wake of a close family member, a person who wishes perhaps to go back briefly with the family members in an indoor setting. We are asking, of course, that you maintain mask-wearing, that you do need to understand this needs to go through prior approval, and it will require quarantine prior to returning on campus. And as all of you know, quarantine involves certain components of testing and discussion with employee health. And again, that policy, that guideline, will have a memo that comes out here at the end of the day, but more importantly, speaking to your director and speaking to employee health and HR. You need to know that, of course, you must have prior approval and not seeking prior approval. There are some concerns for that in terms of HR. So again, you do need to get prior approval, and there is a requirement of quarantine. There are some activities that are still not yet permitted, despite what you might be reading about at the state level. We are not permitting yet for our employees to be in indoor gyms, to dine at a restaurant or bar, whether indoor or outdoor, to attend indoor large gatherings, whether it is an indoor concert, theater, movie, sporting event, worship. At this point, because of the heightened risk still of transmission despite mask-wearing, we are not yet permitting those. We recognize that for many of you, this is what perhaps you see happening at the state level, that you're hoping to do, but we're not there yet. We are tracking it. I will tell you, there was a concerning article that came out in Nature Medicine just yesterday, which pointed to the fact that we actually harbor the virus in high concentrations in our mouths. Now, we've always known it's in our nasal pharynx, and we probably assumed it was in our mouth to some degree. But the article was very clear. There are very specific receptors in the mouth that can bind to the virus, it can propagate, it has high levels compared to, just like the nasal pharynx. It's why often people may recognize they have a loss of sense of smell, but also a sense of taste. And this is where we believe such things is when people, early on, in services where there requires, when people were sitting across from each other in restaurants or at family dinner tables, chewing, talking, speaking generates a lot of viral particles. So at this point, even if it may appear that outdoor eating would be safe, we're very concerned because our employees would be unmasked. And every restaurant is very unique in terms of how they situate outdoor eating. So our travel policies, we think, are balanced. They reflect, I think, our concerns over where we are in the COVID-19 pandemic. They reflect some forecasting regarding the variants and the level of vaccination. It's consistent, I think, with a lot of other experts that have significant concern right now that it's far too premature to lower restrictions. But it also balances for certain things that we recognize because we do have safety measures in place. We do require enhanced mask-wearing on campus. We do continue to test, and most certainly, we promote vaccinations. There's a question from Public Health Nursing, our director, Rima Metz. Is the N95 still the mask of choice, or can we wear a simple face mask? The N95 is the mask of choice when on-campus. For those of you off-campus, I can't impress upon you enough that you should be double masking in public. You should be wearing two high-quality cloth masks or otherwise. Someone's asked if we can attend church services. And again, as we said, we are focused on allowing people to attend an outdoor event, but we're very concerned still about indoor events, and this is a very difficult issue. Worship takes on a very different meaning than, let's say, attending theater or movie. And we certainly recognize it. But from a public health perspective and a contagiousness perspective, they're very similar. And so at this point, we are still asking people to exercise the options of their houses of worship to attend virtual services at this time. We believe that we're probably going to have significant trend data, probably by the middle of May, that will tell us what will happen in Arizona. I think we're all cautiously optimistic that perhaps if vaccines can continue to be highly effective in terms of the number of people vaccinated, reaching that sense of community immunity, as well as being effective against the most dominant new variant, the UK variant, that hopefully we will not see a significant surge of cases. In fact, we're very hopeful that vaccinating elders, both within the community and outside, will help lessen the burden of hospital systems, allowing us on this campus to be able to get back to some of our normal day-to-day posturing than being in this constant sense of crisis posturing. But that doesn't mean we necessarily would want to lower our safety measure. This virus is going to go from being pandemic to endemic, which really is a way of saying it's not going away. This is just one new chapter in it. We're trying to get through here in the 450 days it's been with us to get to the first level where enough people are vaccinated to prevent a global pandemic and an overwhelming loss of life and impact on our day-to-day lives. The fact is, this virus is going to be with us. There will ultimately need to be continued vaccinations, whether or not it may be boosters because perhaps the antibody duration is less than we hope, or perhaps that due to variants, they need to create a better booster shot. But I think we all have to be prepared for the fact that life as we knew it is different. Despite what we might be seeing at the state level, we are going to, as a healthcare organization, be managing people who have had this disease, will continue to get it, will have long-term problems. We're going to have to continue to focus on being a safe environment so that we can care for them and that they have confidence of coming here. And so again, we're going to be dealing with this probably for years to come. The question is, what is that going to look like even six months from now? I don't know. I don't think any of us know. I think what we hope within the next six months is that we'll see vaccines for children at least 12 and over. I think we'll have compelling data on how well the current vaccines, their antibody levels last. We know that the current data shows up to this point that there's confidence that at least six months after receiving the two-dose regimen, the antibodies remain at high levels and effective. I know there's growing data on that. We haven't seen it yet in the public domain. I also want people to know that there are people who are just simply resistant to being vaccinated, whether it is an employee, whether it's a patient or a client that we serve. I think ultimately, some of that is based on needing more information and assurances. I think some of it is because we have to overcome some misinformation or myths that are out there. I think for others, you know, part of this is, and just a frank comment, when you see the state posturing as if this is necessarily over and the case numbers are currently low, and people have just been just overwhelmingly under the pressure of this for 400 days, they want to break through. As I said, it's springtime. They want to move forward. And I think if, at this point, they may think they've dodged a bullet, that now the numbers are down, they didn't get vaccinated, they don't need to get vaccinated. I think what will drive people back and have to do this assessment is when there is a potential surge, especially of other variants. And it will bring people back who perhaps have made a decision now but might need to revisit it. There may be other pressures. We don't know whether or not vaccination status will play a role in being able to participate in things in the future. We know at the moment, we're not seeing that in Arizona, but time can tell. In the question and answer, I want to be respectful of that and then get to our last topic. Excuse me. People are asking about other outdoor activities, hiking and otherwise. Yes, those remain the same. Outdoor activities, especially those that are not in a congregate setting, of course. Somebody wanted to know why there are not yet separate guidelines for those vaccinated. That's a great question. Well, there are three reasons. First and foremost, you cannot, at the moment it appears, really be able to determine whether or not the vaccines will maintain their duration of such high level of protection. We're not sure how long they're going to last. We're not sure how much protection they give against some of the newer We're not sure how much protection they give against some of the newer rare variants that are not yet dominant here, but could. We're still not entirely sure whether or not a person who is vaccinated still can't necessarily transmit the illness to others. Fact is, they can. We hope that it lessens that. There's some good evidence. But it's because of the fact that vaccines are not 100% that we can't necessarily have different guidelines for people that are vaccinated versus those that aren't. In fact, it's just as important that we test those that are vaccinated to determine if they are positive. And we certainly know that vaccines are not going to provide 100% benefit here on this campus. Everyone will have to universally wear the masks. There are other concerns as well. I said there are a few. I think right now, the idea of having separate guidelines for one group or the other is sometimes difficult to mandate. Some businesses can. There's concerns about whether or not municipalities or government agencies can. So at this point, we're still very focused on education as well as advocacy for it. I do want you to know at an organizational level that if we reach 90% of those vaccinated and we maintain that through boosters, that certainly, I think, is going to give us more confidence in some ways. Certainly, we know that although individuals may get ill, it might not necessarily overwhelm the workforce or a high level of risk to the patients we serve. So the more people that are vaccinated, the more we can get back to a normal way of life. I'm taking a look here at other questions that are coming in. And then again, somebody's asked, will there be consideration given in the future if more liberal guidelines to those who have been vaccinated? I think more importantly, we're at a point where we first want to reach a high level of organizational vaccine uptake and consider it. But again, as I've said, at the individual level, there are still some concerns as well. People are asking if the duration of the donor antibodies are equivalent to the antibodies created by the vaccines. No, they're much shorter. Typically, if a person contracts COVID-19 and they receive a therapeutic cocktail, a monoclonal antibody, we look at those antibodies as essentially effective for roughly 90 days or so. In fact, that's CDC guidance even on when a person who's contracted COVID-19 receives antibodies. When would they be eligible for vaccination? So we think of it as roughly 90 days. They do not necessarily have the same level of duration. The other concern is what we've seen, Sam, to your question, is that we've seen greater virus escape from monoclonal antibodies compared to some of the vaccines. Those that have received monoclonal antibodies appears that things like the Brazilian variant, the South African variant, unfortunately, those monoclonal antibodies are less effective against that than perhaps even some of the vaccines at this point. And ongoing efforts are made on that. So while monoclonal antibodies were effective pooled from donors, what we've seen, of course, is that they predominantly are created by the original wild-type version of the virus. And so the level of effectiveness against the variants is less. The vaccines have a very targeted antibody production, and it's really against that particular spike protein. And there's a lot of consistency despite the mutations at that level of the spike protein. There are small changes. Some of them are significant, as we've seen in South Africa and in Brazil. Considerably less so so far, based on the research with the UK variant. Someone has asked, how long would a quarantine period be? I'm trying to, I apologize, I'm trying to read as you typed it. How long would a quarantine period be should prior approval be received to attend an important life event? It is 10 days. It is a 10-day quarantine. Within that, again, include specific testing guidelines as well. Others are saying, are we considering allowing remote workers to work remotely indefinitely? What a great question, Rosa. You know, we have been focused on our opening plans for quite a while, what that means, what types of things do we need to see? One thing that we're completing right now is how to reopen some services at COMAT, those surgical specialty services, dental, women's health, optometry. Audiology is there now. We know PT is there, podiatry. We know that people need to be seen sometimes by team members that do procedures. We've been looking at this, and again, another reason why we're very focused on campus safety, is that we do want to allow us to start to perhaps see some additional patients who need us. It's been a long year for everyone. So that's part of our initial opening plan. Again, we can pivot from that if we had to, but we know that the West Side needs attention as well. And the teams worked out a comprehensive way of looking at that in terms of not just the providers or the clinical teams, but all the support services. We are also looking at what other services we may be able to expand over time at HHK. And most likely, Redtail Hawk will be the last campus to be, quote, decommissioned from COVID-19 because, as everyone knows, it takes enormous effort to have created the space there. And once we reverse that, of course, we want to only have to do that once, hopefully. But we do have plans in place. We've created time limits and metrics that we think about, looking at, again, mid-April, May 1st, June 1st, July 1st. What is it that we need to see to move back into that type of a footprint and hopefully provide more in-person care? But your question is about telecommuting and it is connected. We have been spending quite a bit of time trying to learn through COVID-19 as an organization. What are best practices? We know a few things right away. Just like other organizations, we are going to need to create an interdisciplinary clinic that manages those that have long-term COVID complications. No question about it. There are people certainly with six months or greater of symptoms, scarring of the lungs, worsening diabetes, problems with cognition or thinking clarity, anxiety, depression, as well as just the emotional impact of this and the need for additional behavioral help. Students who perhaps have fallen behind, families that are under more financial stress. We know that we're going to have to manage COVID, even if we get in front of it in terms of vaccines and surge of cases. We also know that one of the things that made our patient population more vulnerable was pre-existing conditions, diabetes, obesity, heart disease, lung disease. These are the things we need to fight long-term. That's how we also fight against the next pandemic, is to fight against those chronic care needs. And we are going to fully pivot to that even more so than in the past, really taking a look at this in a comprehensive way to learn through it. It's a matter, again, of life and death. We're also looking at our campus. We're looking at what are the best employee practices, business practices that we can learn? We know we're going to embrace telemedicine further, even though we're going to, of course, return to in-person care as well. We know that there are certain departments that perhaps we've learned can maintain very high levels of productivity in a telecommuting posture rather than on-campus or some hybrid of that. We're certainly going to look at that. No decisions have been made at all about that. But we do know that over the ensuing number of weeks, probably, again, as I said, at least through mid-May, I don't see any significant changes in how we think about telecommuters or otherwise. We'll continue emergency leave through May 31st and reconsider it again as we look at the data by mid-May. So again, it is, it's a need for resiliency, which all of us, I think, have demonstrated, a need for flexibility, which we all have. Unfortunately, some ambiguities and not having all the answers we want, but still having to give an answer, the best one we can consider and try to do that in a consistent manner, one that's coordinated. And so, you know, kind of to wrap up here, I know that it's, we've been going for about an hour with my portion of this. I wanted to just let all of you know that there's not a single comment that I've made that didn't first require a lot of teamwork and effort and consideration and vetting and looking at the data and coordinating it with, and with the guidance and wisdom of the board, community leadership, your fellow employees and colleagues, with everyone's best interests in mind, realizing that it's almost impossible, of course, to do something that certainly is in everyone's individual, personal best interest. What can we do for the most of us and especially for those that we serve, the community and the patients? And everything I've talked about today is really about that. It's how do you balance so much of this and continue to keep an organization that's very sophisticated, very complex, that is staffed by, you know, just outstandingly committed people? How do we balance that with all of the typical demands, from financial to public health crisis, to being competitive in the market to attract new staff? And doing this all with one purpose in mind, saving lives, literally saving lives. Every decision that we make is how can we save or improve a life? And all of you make that possible. And we've done this very successfully up to this point. And with that, I want to transition here to the last topic on the agenda, and that is compensation. You know, we are phasing out here, okay, but one of the considerations was because the Board of Directors has been very focused on creating fair market value for the positions here. This has actually been a multi-year process. Many of you know many of the stages that started first with the job description project. Ultimately, HR has been working for a couple of years now, working with a consultant, working with ELT, working with the board, to find a way that we can, again, do two things, recognize our employees who are already here and make sure that we focus on them to create a fair market value and to ensure that we have an appropriate floor, so to speak, that we know that our team members are working at a competitive wage, one that's fair. And secondly, recognizing we still need to be competitive to recruit new people, but doing it in such a manner that still those that are here on campus feel respected. We also wanted to focus on a living wage. I know that term is popular, but I will tell you, with the guidance of the board, we are putting forward here a compensation plan that creates that no individual working at Gila River Healthcare, coming here very shortly when this rolls out, would make less than $30,000 a year for a full-time employee. And we've made, again, adjustments throughout all the wage bands to do that. We're doing a phased-in approach. What has happened is that all of the positions in the organization and the job descriptions have transitioned to a grade system. Many of you have heard about this before. There's been previous presentations of what the process would be. We're going to hear about it again today from HR. And what we're doing in a phased-in approach is that there are essentially grades 2 through 15. And here in the third quarter of this fiscal year, we're going to first focus on those in grades 2 through 4, which is actually going to be the majority of those that are employed at Gila River. In the first quarter of the next fiscal year, in the autumn, we'll have a phased-in approach for the next number of grades, which, again, Jackie will discuss. And then roughly a year from now, for those that are in the remaining grades. And this is a way to do it in a budget-conscious way, recognizing how impactful COVID-19 has still been to our operations, that the board's stewardship, the CFO, Judith Roth, and her team's stewardship of this is allowing this. And yet, even at this time of enormous heightened expenses, and I talked about Hero Pay, even an unbudgeted additional $7 million just for Hero Pay the last year. But as that phases out, phasing in the compensation plan. And so with that, I'm going to be here to take additional questions. You're going to hear some basic information on it. You're going to have more questions. Jackie will explain how individuals that are going to be involved in the first phase will certainly learn about it, their directors and others. But this is a nice high overview for all of us as the start of this conversation. So with that, Deanna, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie and then, of course, I'll be here as well for additional questions after Jackie's presentation. Jackie?
Following through with what Dr. Santiago shared this morning, just to remind everybody of the process that HR has gone through with this new system, is we relied on a partnership with Siegel Consultants. And then we took the information from Siegel. They gave us some suggestions. We looked at industry standards and we collaborated with ELT and the board, first of all, to create an overall philosophy. Once that was established, we then developed new job descriptions. And I think to date, we've got about 280 job descriptions that have been rewritten. A lot of them were updated, some were combined, we added some new positions. So overall, I think we have 280 new job descriptions. And then we took that information for those job descriptions or compensation and we developed grades. So we're moving away from each job having its own wage band and we're going to the grade system. And we have established grades 2 through 15. So within each grade, there will be a minimum of first terstile, a midpoint, and then a second terstile. So we will have four points within each grade that we'll be able to compensate employees on a competitive basis. And with the philosophy and the information from Siegel, it has been determined that a competitive wage for Gila River Healthcare will be at between 85% and 115% of that midpoint. And if you have some questions, I'm sure you're wondering, how do we determine how we arrive at a grade or how we arrive at a point within the grade? We rely on some information. We rely on, first of all, what are the essential duties of that job? What educational requirements? And then what does the industry pay for that particular job? And all of that is compiled. And some of those, we have benchmarks that we're able to match up exactly what that job would be with a competitor. And other ones, we had to review educational requirements along with independence and decision-making to get that into the right grade. If you could go to the next slide, Deanna. So as Dr. Santiago shared, we will be implementing this new wage system in phases. And this is just a timeline to kind of help you give a visual of how this will roll out. First phase for grades 2 through 4 is going to be the quarter three for fiscal year 21. Then our next implementation will be quarter one of fiscal year 22. And then our final phase will be quarter three fiscal year 22. And for this first round, the employees are going to receive their information, which will be their compensation memo and their new job description in their bridge portal. So beginning late next week, you'll be receiving information on when to access your bridge portal. Andrea Perry is working with us and will provide instructions on what you'll need to do. So you can be looking for that information to start towards the end of next week. And you can move to the next slide, Deanna. So to give you some examples of how these job codes and grades were reclassified, we just pulled a couple. For grade two, positions such as EDS employee or data entry clerk, those will be classified into that wage band for grade two. Grade three includes claims processor clerk, patient advocate, and CNAs. And then our grade four, the final grade for this first implementation phase, will be a help desk specialist, a dental assistant, and a dispatcher. We will provide a list of grades for two and a dispatcher. We will provide a list of grades, excuse me, the list of the positions in these first three grades and the job codes, so that employees can see where they, what their position and what the grade is going to be for that. And the next slide. So next up, so job codes and titles for grades two through four will be posted on the internet, and they're going to be housed in Bridge for employees to review. The impact date for phase one will be April 16, 2021. So you will receive your compensation memo along with an updated job description in the Bridge Portal. And Andrea will work with us so that you have the instructions on signing that job description, so HR can retrieve that for your personnel file. And then last but not least, HR wants to partner with the directors and the chiefs, so that you'll receive that detailed information about those team members impacted by this first phase of implementation. And we will be participating in your department meetings in late April and early May, so that you have all of that information.
Well, thank you very much, Jackie. And again, I think as we can see in the chat, some of the questions that we would expect, people want to know, will there be an ability to see the wage bands and the grades published at some point, so people know where they are? Certainly, directors as well as individuals get a chance to see where they are within that, as they do their things such as being hired and annual reviews. We do have a certain level of transparency we want to practice. But most importantly, I think, as Jackie has said, that this is phased in. Those that are directly impacted will have communication to them as well as instructions. Their directors and chiefs will be aware of who's impacted, so they're available to answer any additional questions. This is part of a multi-year process to get to this point. It will still, again, again, I appreciate the board's leadership on this, phasing it in over roughly a year, because, again, the impact of COVID has been so significant, but still prioritizing this for our employees. Again, the general rule of thumb here was to ensure that we had a philosophy that when we are making changes, that everyone is above a certain floor, that we wanted people to have, to be within 85% to 115% of that midpoint. We wanted to ensure that existing employees knew during their annual reviews, and this will be the next part of this, what it takes to get to that next tercal, what type of either education or work performance. So again, this is going to be a multi-year process, where we want to make sure that moving forward for all of our employees, that they understand when they're here as a member of the team, how important it is, their growth and development is, that we want to be able to allow them to grow either within their position or grow and develop into new positions in the organization. We want them to know that, you know, they're appreciated and that it's transparent, so they know what they need to do to move forward. So I know HR is going to be focused again on this for another couple of years, really, believe it or not. And every two to three years, we're going to have to go back and look at the market values again and do that. So I appreciate for a lot of people, they may have been long-term employees here, and there have been times where it feels like perhaps things like wage compensation and other things took a while to perhaps develop. What we're trying to do with this current system is to adopt one also that can be continuously updated, one that can be a plan moving forward. And again, we think it works for the organization. We think it'll work for individuals. We think it values those that are here. We think it allows us to be competitive for those that are new to join us. But it's going to take all of our involvement, especially the directors and others working with HR, on how we really think about annual performances and goals and changing some of that to where it is more performance-based, but also education and development-based. So again, things that, like all good things, are going to take some time to be where we want to be, but I think these are really important first steps. And with that, Deanna, I'm going back through to take a look at questions, and I hope no one minds, but some came in a little bit late that are not just related to compensation. A question was asked about eye protection and utilizing it the way that we do. And again, I know that employee health and safety and infection prevention are here, and I know what we're really focused on, again, is that eye protection because of that risk of transmission. But what we will do, again, as part of the memo, is we'll spell out, again, the details of eye protection in the memo for everyone, so that it's a written record and people can know what the requirements are based on their role in the organization and the current standard that we're maintaining. Another was asked about smart masks and one that can actually actively deactivate the virus. Excellent idea. We've thought about this. As you know, we've also even engaged in sterilization of our masks, but the smart masks are really something to behold as they've developed. Right now, we have anywhere from 45, 47,000 high-quality N95 masks. At this point, we will probably not be moving towards smart masks at this point, but it's something that the team will continue to keep us informed about moving forward if such options start to develop that are significant, more protection, and as, you know, certainly availability. Right now, I do believe that the use of the N95s and a procedure mask over that is an extremely high level of protection at this point. But great question about smart masks. Taking a look here at individuals, again, asking some things about personal compensation, again, that can be something that we can have their director and others speak to them specifically about. And again, thank you, Deanna. Deanna is collecting some of you that are asking privately concerns that you have, and we will make sure that those questions get answered of a private nature. Also, again, someone's asked about entry-level pay and same wage as someone who's been here for years. There are two things about a new level person, right? And I appreciate the question because it was about entry-level pay. Yes, it is one of the things we took into consideration, and I think in those conversations you'll see, that we are bringing all individuals up to a level essentially above the minimum, so that there are opportunities for people that are entry-level to start, and there's a portion of the wage band for those that are not experienced but are qualified for a new position to join us. At the same time, there are people that apply that are very experienced and have many years of experience outside of the organization, and certainly that has to be taken into account when making a competitive offer to them as well. So again, as we expected, a lot of really good questions about wage and compensation. I think Jackie, certainly you and your team will be focused on next steps, as well as we'll make sure some of the individual questions are routed to you that came through personally to Deanna Jackson. With that, as I'm taking a look and looking at the time, what I do want to allow is for the Board of Directors to have an opportunity to address all of us as well. And Deanna, if we could, I'm not sure if because of the way that we've set up the WebEx, perhaps they have to be unmuted by yourself or there's a process rather than just unmuting directly. Perhaps you could explain it, because I'd like to have an opportunity for the board to speak to the staff as well.
Yes, I'm muting the board right now. I muted Chairman Bob Pablo. I muted him. So I'll mute the board, the ones that I see on. I do have all the board on that I'm showing except Rachel.
Thank you very much, Deanna. And I'm going to turn this over to the chairman of the board, Mr. Bob Pablo, to do the introductions of the board and also allow them for their comments. Mr. Chair, please.
Thank you, Dr. Santiago. Good morning, everybody. We have all our board members here representing our organization. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and let them speak. I'll speak last. Deanna said Rachel's not with us today, but I'm going to defer to our board member, Dr. Bishop. Dr. Bishop, if you're on the call, the floor is yours to say a few comments.
Dr. Bishop, I'm unable to hear you, but I see you on.
Okay, Deanna, if we can't hear, we can come back to you. Next, we'll go to board member Catherine Lewis. Miss Lewis, if you'd like to say a few words.
That's why we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Just wanted to make sure, wanted to thank everybody for joining. I'm hoping everybody's getting answered. We're going through a lot of changes, but grateful that everybody addressed some questions and concerns. And thank you all for joining. Please reach out if anything more, if you have any questions, if they didn't get answered today, reach out to your directors and make sure that everything's... Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay, next, we have our board member, Mr. Myron Scherz. Mr. Scherz.
Yes, good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Outstanding. All right. Good to be on this call today. And it is a great honor to be in front of all of the employees of Gila River Healthcare. And we, we, the board, we really are supportive of a lot of the things that have gone on over these past number of months. As Dr. Santiago had discussed earlier, we know it's been a difficult time dealing with the pandemic, and we're not any different than you all. We all struggle with it as well. But we appreciate that attitude of being able to deal with adversity and going forward to deal with all the other things that come forward dealing with healthcare. So we appreciate all of those things. As discussed earlier, there's been many changes. Policies have been driven by ELT, and the board has reviewed and approved. And in addition to the compensation, we've gone through a lot of hours of due diligence to ensure that our employees are respectfully taken care of with a balanced approach to how we implement policies and also the wage banding as well. So we understand that there's going to be some questions that are coming forth, but we did our utmost to provide that direction and leadership from the Board of Directors to help our employees with that thought at the forefront, that we are helping one another. So we appreciate what has been done. We also ask for, to continue in our posturing to deal with what we're going through despite what we're hearing on the national news and on the local news, for that matter. We have to ensure that we're vigilant in maintaining our safety and our safety protocols and things that need to be done. And I encourage you as well, if you have not stepped up and taken the vaccine and you're reluctant or you're hesitant, please do some more research, talk to people, talk to your providers and your coworkers. And if you want to know about it from others, like the Board of Directors, we've all stepped forward in taking our vaccines. We've been vaccinated fully. And it's something I believe that needs to be done for, not only for yourself, your family, but for our community. You work in Gila River and the community for our patients. And we emphasize that that is something that we need to ensure that the message goes forth to our people, to the community, that we are willing to take this vaccination seriously, and we will do our best to ensure their safety as well. So appreciate all that you do, and have a good afternoon. And again, I appreciate the ability to speak to all of you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scherz. Going back to Dr. Bishop, are you able to get off mute?
Dr. Bishop, are you there? Deanna, I cannot see if she's...
Bob, I do see her. She is on, but she, and she is unmuted. I'm not sure what's going on. She's on by her cell phone. Oh, she dropped off. There she is. We can, she's trying to say something, but it's not coming through.
Okay, it sounds like she's having connectivity problems at the moment. So I'll try to go back to her, because I can barely hear her talking right now. Okay, it sounds like she's having connection problems. So with that, I'll go ahead and speak. Good morning, everybody. It's good to be with you guys today. Good to be here with our employees on the call. And appreciate all the questions that will be coming forth. And I wanted to say I echo all the same comments that were made by the board members who spoke previously before me. And, you know, it's been a long time. We've been in this posture for over a year. And when we first came into this posture, there was no playbook. There was no playbook on how to navigate what COVID brought to the community and our organization. So it took the work of a lot of you on this call to go out of your normal work duties, your positions, to be part of the teams, whatever it may have been, the couriers, whether it's the testing, the vaccination teams, and move quickly. I said this last summer, you know, when it came to our COVID services, we essentially, we essentially created a whole service line dedicated to COVID without the luxury of time to plan, to allocate financial obligations to what we were doing. And we had to do it at a moment's notice to save lives, to help our patients, to help you as employees by implementing policy, safety measures, and those types of things. So this organization did it. We did it well. And we couldn't have done it without the work of you on this call. You guys made Gila River what it is today as far as our safety measures, our robust testing, vaccinations to the community, all of those things. And it has become a model for other healthcare organizations, not just in Indian country, but in the Phoenix area. A lot of hospitals aren't doing what we're doing. So that's a testament to the leadership, but also to mainly to you as employees for buying in and doing what was necessary to keep each other safe, their families safe, our patients safe. So I wanted to say thank you for doing that, but not only that, we're thinking ahead to the future. You know, I've had private conversations with Dr. Santiago, where we've asked those questions of what is our footprint for Gila River Healthcare look like in the next several years? How is COVID going to impact us as an organization with our operations? What does it look like? What does it look like to the community? Because one of the things that we've come to know is that Gila River Healthcare has worked closely with our tribal leadership, our community council. And not only that, a lot of the tribal entities to partner in helping fight this pandemic. And with that, we've discovered a lot of opportunities in the future to cover and reach out and touch more patients in the community. So those things that we, I mentioned, that's what we're going to look at. So the footprint for Gila River Healthcare has pretty much been changed forever. You know, we'll continue to use telehealth. We'll continue to posture in a way and mobilize as the community needs fit this organization. So with that, the success of this organization will be dependent on you, the employees, because we're only as successful as our employees. So we're going to walk that walk with you. We've always looked at things methodically in our board meetings along with ELT. And we've had a lot, a lot of long hours, a lot of anguish of what do we do? What's our next steps? And a lot of this pandemic is dictated by the data that we see. The cases rising, lowering. You know, the, the tricky part in all of this is that we just don't know. We just don't know when this is going to end. There's no end date inside. So as long as we keep doing what we need to do, we'll be okay. But with the state opening up, for me personally, it's concerning. Because at the end of the day, if cases rise, people get severely ill, healthcare, whether it's our system or other systems in the state, will be the ones to pick up those pieces. And there will be an expectation by the public, our community, for us to step up and continue to give the adequate care for those folks coming in and needing, needing care in those times of stress and, and anxiety. Now, with that, one of the things that we worked on last year before FY21 started was this compensation project. You know, we wanted to roll it out sooner, but because of COVID, we could not. We had to be very aware of our fiscal, uh, financials and what we had to do in order to posture for our COVID services. So with this, I know it's been a long time coming. It's been, it's been years in the making. And I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing up all those positions to a competitive wage salary to other healthcare systems. It's been, it's been vetted. It's been, the layers have been peeled back. Uh, the board has been involved in that. And so now that we announced it, I know there's going to be expectations by you, the employees, for it to happen. Because I know there's been other projects in the past that has happened and we didn't see anything. So with this, we're looking forward to it. We're going to roll it out. And you know, if, if you're not one of the tiers mentioned by HR earlier, it'll, it'll come up eventually in time. So just be, be patient. So with that, I just want to say I appreciate everything you guys do. Hang in there. Keep on fighting. I know it's, 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 everybody's just over it. Myself included. So keep on fighting. We're going to get there. And again, to echo the same sentiments as Mr. Scherz, those of you that are haven't gotten the vaccine, just have that consideration one way or another. Because the more employees we get vaccinated, the safer you're going to be for your coworkers, the people sitting beside you on this call. The people you work with. You know, it gives us that added assurance and relief when we know people are vaccinated. And not only that, our community. I know there's a lot of challenges of vaccine hesitancy right now. But you know, I think the more we roll it out, the more vaccines become available, hopefully that'll change people's minds. And like Mr. Scherz said, do the research. Ask our providers, ask Dr. Santiago. And you know, it, it's a good thing. It, it's going to help save lives in the future and keep us safe. So with that, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I know it's been a long time since we had a a town hall. And hopefully we, we can have another one sooner than later. But I appreciate all your, your work, your sacrifice that you've done with your, not only yourselves, but your families. Um, meeting those challenges of coordinating things like your children, your, your, how you shop, how, how we take care of our families, our elders, those types of things. It's a very challenging time for all of us, but just be safe out there. Thank you. Appreciate everything you guys do. And just want to wish you a safe weekend. Enjoy the rest of Friday, but please be safe out there. And we'll talk to you guys again. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Not just for your comments, of course, but your leadership during this past year. Uh, no question about it. This has been an all-team effort. And, and before wrapping up, I do want to give a chance to my colleagues on ELT to say a few words to all of you. Again, some of your questions that have come in the chat will actually be better answered by some of them and we'll collect them offline and make sure that individual questions are answered. But with that, what I'd like to go to first is to Judith Roth, our Chief Financial Officer. Judith, if you'd like to say a few words to the group?
Thank you, Dr. Santiago. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can.
Great. Um, I just want to thank everyone for, for everything that, you know, you've done in the last year. I know it hasn't been easy. Um, I know it's been very challenging and you know, we as an organization have done our best to support the needs of not just the community, but for you as employees as well. And so some of the decisions we've had to make, as Dr. Santiago has just said, you know, and the board have said, have not been easy. And, and I know it's hard, but some of the choices that we've had to make in the recent weeks, specifically as it relates to hero pay, was not an easy one. Well, we have to think about the organization. We have to be thinking about our future plans and how we, we are going to be opening up services. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. And you know, as it relates to the compensation exercise that we'll be going through in the next couple of weeks, if you do have any questions, please feel free to reach out to HR or to myself and payroll. And, and for the caring house as well, Max and his team are going to be involved in assisting HR with the comp adjustments. So if you have any concerns, please reach out to us, especially for those individuals who may not have received their evaluations. We recognize that that does will, will be an issue for some of you. And so we'll work with you to make sure that you receive the right compensation adjustments. And like I said before, just feel free to reach out to us if you have, if you have any concerns. Or to your direct, you know, supervisors or your chiefs, and they will make sure to communicate that to us. Um, and, and have a great weekend, everyone. That's all I have, Dr. Santiago.
Well, thanks, Judith. Greatly appreciated. And we'll go to Priscilla Foote, our Chief Behavioral Health Officer. Priscilla?
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for your time. You know, I, I want to echo Judith's sentiments in terms of thank you for all the work that you're doing. And you know, I'm really proud of, of where we are. And the safety precautions, although they are difficult at times and tedious, they're there for a reason. And in terms of us being healthcare and us emulating and modeling appropriate behaviors for safety and and health of our patients and ourselves and our families and our community, I think it's important that we you know, stick to what we're doing and follow the science. Um, I am going to take this opportunity to really of course, you know, being involved with behavioral health, we have to look out for ourselves and our mental health. And I want to take a moment just to reflect on that and remind everybody to do what you need to do to be well. And that goes to the basics, right? Get enough sleep. Eat healthy foods. Stay away from things that might not be healthy for you. Get some exercise. Surround yourself with people who are positive energy for yourself. Take breaks. Do all those things. I was recently actually on the employee wellness webpage on our intranet site. And there is a wealth of information. And if you have not had a chance to go on employee wellness and there's one in the banner, so you can just click on it on the intranet page, there is a lot of information. And I was looking at the, there's a walking activity. Um, you know, getting from the couch to do one of 5K, that kind of thing. And I encourage you to take a look at that. And it also has a link to the CARES program and the things that we're doing there. Um, you know, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to thank you all for what you're doing. And in order to take care of other people, we need to take care of ourselves. So thank you.
Well, thanks so much, Priscilla. And thank you very much for those wise words. Ms. Susan Kelly, our Chief Nursing Officer. Ms. Kelly, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Santiago. And good afternoon to everyone. You know, certainly I can't express my appreciation enough for all of the work that everyone has done. Um, but I think that out of this, it's, it's noteworthy to say a couple of things. I know of no other healthcare system that has managed this pandemic like we have. We're truly unique in that way. And although it has come with its own sacrifices for us, I think our, our outcomes speak for it. So that is, I think, something that you should keep in mind. It was not easy decision for the board and for ELT to make some of these decisions, but it's paid off, I believe. And the last thing I want to say is if I had to go through a hundred-year pandemic, there'd be no other place I'd rather be. I'm so proud of being at Gila River. And I really do see a benefit, not that I would want to go through this. I see that we really have become even a stronger team. So I appreciate each of you and thank you.
Thanks so much, Susan. And, and just to recognize so many people have played a, a major part in, in getting us through this. And, and I could go through and name all 560 attendees and the board and, and ELT. And I certainly want to recognize all of them. Mr. Penry, if you would, sir, interim chief operating officer.
Dr. Santiago, I don't think he touched up to audio. I'm trying to.
Not a problem. I can, I can see, I can just see now that he doesn't have a mic. And so we'll move then to Dr. Wes Yamada, our interim chief medical officer. And as everyone knows, Wes is Wes, I think you, are you at 33, 34 years since you first joined Gila River Healthcare?
Well, you know, I've been here on campus for, oh my God, since about 7:30 this morning. So that's about 34, you know. Um, I remember coming here as a baby and back in the covered wagon days, as Bob Pablo likes to say. Uh, yeah, I was 87, June of 87, then I popped, popped into the organization. And I've always famously said, I went to bed 34 years ago and I woke up and it was today. So it's, it's been, it's been a journey for sure. And so let me see how many ways we can say thank you to all of you. I think you've heard it all, but so I too want to thank you guys for your efforts, especially taking on duties that necessarily you weren't accustomed to. So thanks for your flexibility, your patience and your dedication to the organization's task. One last thing is starting on Monday, if you haven't already gotten the memo, you'll probably get it sometime today. We're going to, we're going to halt the N95 sterilization efforts or program because you know, looking at the, looking at the data, the quantities of the N95s coming in for rest- sterilization has been on a steady decline. So we currently, currently have an inventory that's quite high. I think Dr. Santiago said it's right around 44 to 46,000. And the burn rates are, you know, steady. And so it, that reflects that we're going to probably have an adequate amount of N95s for the near future. So but we'll continue to monitor the metrics really close. So if there's a sudden increase in consumption, consumption, or if we face difficulty in procuring N95s, we may have to reinstitute the re-sterilization program. But as of next Monday, we're going to, we're going to put a, a stop to it. But having said that, please continue to follow the, your guidelines for the care and use of the masks. You can wear these N95s for 40 hours. It is in non-clinical settings. If you're in a non-clinical administrative setting, you can wear it for 40 hours and then you can discard it. If you're in a clinical, clinic patient facing or, or facing area, just continue to use your current protocols for use and wear and discard. And then of course, if discard these N95s, if you, if they are compromised, if you see any tears or contamination or excessive makeup or anything that would compromise the mask. So that's my update. Keep your head up or like Susan Druich loves to say, be positive, but test negative. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thanks, Wes. And again, just some closing comments for everyone. There have been some additional questions that have come through. Uh, there's been questions about um, the role of the scrub program. Yes, we're going to continue to stay focused in our scrub program and even looking at ways to adopt it to a more permanent basis, perhaps with automation. I think it's an important part of any healthcare system to make sure that when you come here and you're going to be focusing with patients, that, that you're safe when, when you arrive and your family's safe when you arrive home. Also, we are still, of course, offering vaccines for employees. Uh, it is always available and we do it at VLJ on Mondays through Robin Henry and her team. If anyone certainly wishes to be vaccinated, absolutely, we will vaccinate you. Also, we are in the window for joint commission and Sue Kelly and her team. Uh, so many are on it, as all of you are now are preparing us. We are in that window. Typically, joint commission, when they do arrive, shows up very early on a Tuesday morning and they typically stay for four days. But that doesn't mean we can let our guard down on Monday mornings and assume they're not showing. Uh, we absolutely are going to be focused on a successful survey. A lot of work continues to go into it. We should always be in survey mode. But I want to thank Susan and her team for really getting us to where we need to be even now during COVID for that upcoming visit that I think we all anticipate will happen shortly. Uh, two other questions, since I, I appreciate that people are, are taking the time to type them. Someone's asked, will vaccines be available for our spouses? That of course would assume that uh, the spouse is not a Gila River Indian Community member or, or a member of auction. Uh, but perhaps what we, you know, our term is a non-beneficiary. At this point, they are not eligible. Um, however, I think what's really fortunate here in Arizona, as everyone is aware now, uh, is how quickly they've received vaccines and are now making them available uh, for, for all Arizonans that are, are over the age of, of 16. So I certainly recommend all of you ensure that your families are vaccinated. And then just maybe a few closing comments here because others have as well. You know, we, we talked a lot about where we've been. We've talked about where we are. Although sometimes that's probably the hardest thing to talk about in some ways. You can give a lot of statistics and a lot of numbers. But really it's, how does that inform where we're going to be? How do you forecast and predict these things? Fortunately, we have a pretty good track record through this. Um, we, as, as Chairman Pablo said and others, while there wasn't a playbook, one of the things that we that we really have is just amazing institutional intelligence and talent across our organization. There are some people that are in certain particular roles, but as you get to know them, and that is one of the benefits of COVID, is that we've really gotten to know each other in a lot of, lot of detailed ways because of the intensity of the work, is that there are people that are here that have great skills. And there's also people who just have great ideas. And a lot of those have, have been escalated to us and they really do get a full vetting. We have navigated this well because we've done this together. We really are in this together. And I know some of you may receive or eventually receive, sometimes I have an opportunity to send out emails to all of you in one fashion or another, just to let you know that, you know, thinking of you and how important it is that we remain together as a team. And we are in this together and we've continued to do very well. We will continue to do well. I do think that all good organizations really do take the time to value their individuals, create an excellent team, and are solution-oriented. And there are a lot of things that still are going to need our attention, and there are a lot of new things that have now come to light. We're going to learn through this experience. It already is informing best practices, but probably the one that's most important is just a deep and abiding respect for each other. I think everyone knows when they look at the other, how hard everyone has been working. And so that's what I just want to finish on, is that a lot of these conversations that we have, perhaps they're just a few minutes, sometimes they're two hours. But please don't let it get lost, that there's not a deep and abiding respect for all of you. And we hope you understand that those of us that are at least asked to serve in a leadership role, that when we do make decisions, it's never, of course, to be self-serving. We truly have your best interests at heart. We are your representatives and we hope, of course, that you continue to ask us excellent questions and to give us your best ideas. It really is something that we, that we respond to. So thank you very much to everybody. Again, thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for all that you will do. It really matters. And I hope you have a pleasant Passover, Palm Sunday, and certainly Easter Sunday with your family, based on which faith you may practice, or just enjoy spring in a safe manner. Thank you so much, everyone, and please have a safe weekend. And with that, Deanna, I want to thank everyone. And of course, we'll make sure to collate the questions that came in for those that had personal questions. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.